Yes.
Do you want to take a note?
Sure.
Starting at thirty-five, then we can do a quick roll call. Leslie Allison CI is here.
Carla Graff.
Eliza Dietrich.
I have to say my name, so I gave samples. I spaced out.
We're being recorded.
Gina Ragnelli, staff liaison.
Carrie Alfano, trustee liaison.
Mary Brenner, house commissioner.
Okay. All right. Who is our secretary for tonight?
Me.
Okay, thank you.
I'm trying.
Thank you, Eliza.
Hold on one second. You called the meeting to order, right?
Correct.
Okay, sorry, I'm not as fast as Kathy.
At five-thirty-five.
Got that part, and then who seconded?
Oh, yeah, we didn't second too.
Okay, that's fine. Make sure I'm not ssing up, okay.
All right, no amendments to agenda, we only have one item there. So let's start talking about our 2024 budget needs for the fund commission. I think we should start with where we're at, or what we've spent thus far this year. Do you have a final budget for the fall festival?
Of course. Do we know how much Eric? This was the last one I had.
Didn't get that from Brian yet, I'm sorry. Is that the only expense you're waiting for?
I think so.
Oh, okay. I will, um... I'm so sorry, I didn't, I didn't.
That's okay.
I saw Brian today, but he had been off because he had eye surgery. I will get, I will get, get that and get it to you.
Okay.
But just for a placeholder, I think we talked seven hundred for two people, so I don't think it would be more than three fifty based on the information that Brian gave me for two, so when there was only one. So if you want a placeholder, I would use three fifty, just.
Okay.
But I will check.
And that looks like that we bring the grand total to two thousand nine hundred and ten dollars and fifty-five cents.
Two thousand nine hundred and fifty-five cents.
Two thousand nine hundred and ten dollars and fifty-five cents?
No.
Two thousand and fifty-five dollars and fifty-five cents. Did you get that, Eliza?
Okay, yeah. Lot of fives.
Lots of fives.
Got it.
My favorite number.
Ooh.
Okay. That's where we were at.
Congratulations on that.
Yes, they will say we did end up taking a lot off the plate. Either it was things weren't available, or things were a bit more than what we had allocated to when we requested our money for what we were thinking what was left in our budget. Like, the little inflatable, I'm gonna call it a game, it was not a slide, it's not big, it's a game, it's an inflatable thing. I had like eight hundred, I think it was, and for whatever reason, for someone to go from Addison, Illinois to Villa Park, Illinois, would bring the charge to fifteen hundred dollars. So I said, no way, you're crazy, I'm your neighbor. So we just didn't, we took it off the list for this year. So there were things that we didn't do that we originally had in our plans, and what caused us to ask for the additional funds that ended up not happening, or were adjusted. Porta potties were a little cheaper than we thought, so bonus. Hay bales, Menards did not have any, I did look at Home Depot, but you would have had to order them. And they're no longer seven dollars each, they were twenty-eight dollars each, so.
We did fine.
Yes, we did, your thing worked perfect, we didn't need them for the picture thing that we had planned on. It was, it worked out fine. We didn't end up getting a dance floor because we moved our location to the pavilion. So there were definitely some adjustments that made us under budget. However, there were things that we didn't do that I would still like to be able to do next year and add on. And we did get some feedback from people politely that there were things that they would have liked to have seen, or thought that we could have done better on with live music bands, seems to be the popular thing, and inflatables.
It's a big ticket. Live entertainment, just.
I know, and it takes so much organization.
I am the organization queen now. Plus, I have a few people that I know who are in bands, but.
That's good. The kids, the, uh, the music place, they do tons of events. Kid Rock, or, yeah. What is it?
School of Rock.
School of Rock.
Thank you.
I knew it was something with Kid Rock.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely think we have options. But I don't wanna dismiss being able, like, or we could do like the petting zoo, or goat yoga, like, we had a million ideas on it, like, this year.
Just trying not to go over budget. I know that I personally bought items that I'm not asking to be reimbursed.
Same.
Charlotte did as well, because we were unsure where we were with numbers, so.
And that's, I'm not complaining, it's, it's fine, I wouldn't, if it was a problem, I wouldn't have done it. But that being said, doesn't make me wanna like, just ask for the same amount for our annual budget as what has been allocated.
We go through all of them.
Yeah.
Sure.
Well, the first thing I think is we need to, I know this has been a talking point for a couple of years, is to get those phone calls and the spring street dollars off of that.
It's not on the list. I think that it would be nice if the list that we provide is actually what's used.
Yeah, so what should we have on there? What's our first?
The first, well, I don't know, I just went through, and I have the Finding Lucky with the business, if we wanna do that again. That's what we did last year. Now that we know how to do that, that, I mean, I don't think we need much of a budget for that either, so. I mean, if we wanna budget.
A hundred dollars?
A hundred bucks, maybe, uh, let's budget, we can always take it away later on, so let's budget like two hundred. Just to be on the, that's just my, my thought.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the name of the event.
It's the Find Lucky.
Find Lucky. Oh, is that the?
The Leprechaun search.
Oh, yeah.
I was saying monkey. I said monkey.
Lucky.
Lucky.
Lucky the leprechaun.
Makes more sense.
Okay. Okay, two hundred.
Does anybody, I don't know, I went through and put all the other things on the list, so I kind of have them in order.
That's perfect.
No, okay.
Now, I, I don't know about anybody else, but I really would like, I'd like to put the sidewalk chalk back as a special, like, three-hour thing again around.
Separate?
Yeah.
Okay.
Around, like, Village Hall or something, and get the police chief or whoever it was again to do. I thi- I think our problem with all in the past two years is we didn't know how to market, because we didn't know how to advertise it, we didn't know how to get that out there that we're doing this. We're getting so much better with that every time, with our banners, and knowing how to get somebody to put them where they're, they're, they mean things, and our flyers.
Well, we have a hundred tattoo shops in town, so we could get maybe some tattoo artists or artists to come and do some cool.
And make that more of an event. It's not hard.
What month should we?
Well, I think it was usually in the spring. Now, I remember last year we had.
No, it was usually in August, wasn't it?
The first school started.
The first weekend, the first weekend of August.
We can probably keep it in August, or July, or August? Since we have June, we have March, June, and September. Right? So do, should we try to keep that in August or July?
August is fine.
Okay.
Works fine in May.
We don't need to budget, maybe budget for signage, advertising?
Just advertising.
We do snacks and stuff for that, don't we?
Yeah. Water and snacks.
Is that the hot dog thing?
The police, yeah, I think the, didn't the police?
Do we pay for that, or is that a volunteer thing?
They do it free.
Police used to do it.
So maybe budget for water, snacks, and advertising?
Yeah, so, well, I guess advertising for everything we do.
Yeah. So this says a thousand. Do you, no, I think maybe three hundred, two hundred?
Probably two hundred, if we're doing that for Lucky, I think.
Okay.
How much were your banners and things, and how much for?
Banner was sixty-six, we have tons of chalk.
What about the chalk?
We have tons of chalk, I believe.
The police department purchases the hot dogs and the charcoal, but we're supposed to provide, like, the chips and the drinks and stuff. So we're not doing that with Finding Lucky, so I don't understand how two hundred dollars. Okay, well, fill us in, let us know, because we. I think five hundred is fair.
Five hundred for sidewalk?
I'd work backwards, too.
Do you think two hundred's too much for Lucky?
How much did you spend?
No, I don't.
Uh-huh, one thirty-three.
And that's basically for.
Surprises.
Your, your, your awards that you're giving away.
Yeah, that was awards, yeah. Okay. So.
So after, after that would be, well.
Kites and Kicks would be before that.
Kites and Kicks. So I don't know what date we wanna do that, because we had to push it back, did we push it back last year?
Yeah.
You were pip-pip-chu-deoing at the time.
That was Muff, or that was Disney.
Oh, sorry.
Matoya, other vacation.
Oh, that's nice, that's nice, no more vacations, we do.
No, I can't afford it. I do have the budget.
Okay. We, we, we did it like late June last year, I don't know, do you wanna do it earlier June?
Well, I think we stick with June, and then we can figure out our dates, maybe. But as far as budget, we didn't do yard signs, and that was, I think, a really nice for, I don't know if we need to spend.
Maybe we don't.
That much.
Twenty-five or so.
What's the banners though, too, I think?
Yeah. And the banner I got, it's been sixty-six dollars, so that's not a huge. Kites were two hundred and fifty, we still have some kites left over. Do you wanna say?
Seven fifty?
Seven fifty cents of probes.
Do you have a camera?
Just, um, this year, we had the summer festival on one day, and the Kites and Kicks on the day after. Just a suggestion that we put a little bit of time in between those.
When is the summer festival gonna be?
June twenty-second, I believe, is the Saturday.
Twenty-four?
I would like to go earlier.
Twenty-four.
June twenty-second.
What, the twenty-second and twenty-third?
Yeah. Yeah.
Twenty-second is Saturday.
So just when you're talking about dates later, just something.
I think we, I don't know, I think earlier in June.
I agree, because we can advertise it at the end of school, too.
Yeah.
We don't worry is the weather, but.
Yeah, well, oh, it's so far.
I think the weather is, whether the weather is hot, whether the weather is cold, whatever the weather, whatever the weather, whether.
It's gonna be.
As long as it's windy weather.
Okay.
Right now.
Yeah, you can't, you can't even think about that.
When's on Father's Day?
The sixteenth.
The week before.
Sixteen.
So that's out.
That's the ninth or the second.
Second's really early.
I won't be here on the ninth.
Is that Memorial, Memorial Day is not the second?
No, that's May. No, but Memorial Day will fall on that. Always.
We're going out of San Juan, we're going to.
I remember my birth in the ice.
That's it? So good. Puerto Rico's my favorite place. So I guess it's, we only have the second or the ninth, our only choices.
I won't be there either of those, so.
Okay. Sunday, Sunday?
Uh, no, I won't be back, you leave on the twenty-eighth, and we're not back until the fourteenth.
Dang, that's awesome.
I like the ninth.
You like the ninth, okay.
What does anybody else think, you don't like the second, so.
It just seems early to me, but.
I don't know when they're out of school. When do their staff go into school?
Uh, they are out of school the Friday before.
Twenty-fifth, May twenty-fifth, I think.
I think, yeah, as long as we don't have any.
Dang, that's early.
We shouldn't have any emergency days, because now they're all online.
Thanks to Zoom.
Gives them a whole week, even if they're. So the ninth, do you think that, that?
Sure.
We'll tentatively do the ninth.
Okay.
That being said, the sooner we can let the food truck guys know, let's flood those guys.
I think that was the week that they weren't available.
Oh, did you talk to them?
I'm about to.
You were talking about them.
First one, first Saturday.
Was it the first one, or was it the second?
Well, this is Sunday.
I don't know that I was there for that entire conversation.
I don't know anything about it. What, conversation?
We talked to the three food trucks that we had there, and they would be happy to come to Kites and Kicks. But they are already scheduled for the first weekend of June.
Okay.
So, but they said, as soon as we know when we wanna do this, let them know, so then they can get us on the calendar, because they get booked up fast. So.
So you wanna make that official?
Carla, do it.
I'll just see right now if they're available.
Okay. But, I mean, it's smaller than the Jubilee was, so, if they're fine.
They're fine with it, they, they were totally fine with that, they understood that.
Okay.
So.
I didn't talk to him, so I have no idea.
Now that took a second to tear.
Apparently.
Hopefully, Hatrick Barbecue will show up to your event, they hosted us.
Oh, they withdrew from ours, too, and I thought, oh, they're.
Maybe they're close.
I don't know, something happened.
You know what, because Tickle My Tamale guy, Iggy said, he's not been responding, I think he was supposed to be at one of those, the Lombard. Where they have like cars, I forget what they're called.
It's like the Saturday night.
Yeah, Saturday night, something, or I think he was supposed to be there and didn't show.
Okay.
So maybe they're having trouble with their trucks.
Going down, but you know what, like.
But they did call us last week.
I was gonna say, be cool about it, and at least say something.
Yeah.
Wait, what, what was the date of our event?
June ninth.
No, the, 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 sorry, our, our fest was on.
The thirtieth.
Thirty. So Hatrick Barbecue Company was at Arcata Theater on the twenty-ninth. So more great feedback talking about feeding everybody over at Arcata Theater, so they're doing business, they're probably just getting selective.
Yeah, maybe so, but say something, they should say.
Oh, I believe you.
Be professional about it. You know what I mean?
Yeah, they were up in Sugar Grove a few days before that, big, big event, so, yeah.
I wouldn't ask them again.
No, no.
And I mean, honestly, I feel like it was, we did fine without them.
Oh, yeah. You know, Tickle My Tamale contacted us like two or three weeks ago, and were, they were interested in Brew Fest. And I said, we can't have a fourth truck, because it, it's a, we know that there's not gonna be more than five or six hundred people, do you know what I mean? So we said, we called everybody to ask if they were still committed, they said yes. And we told Tickle My Tamale, we'll put you on a waitlist if somebody changes their mind, you know, and then we'll contact you. And then it was like, maybe a week later or something, maybe two weeks later, Hatrick called and said, I can't be there. We can't be there.
I forgot his name, honestly, I just remember, I remember the email address, is Hatrick Barbecue Company, or something like.
You know what, somebody else at work is the primary contact, not me, so I don't.
So did you have three then, or do you have four?
So we said no to Tickle My Tamale. Then Hatrick Barbecue pulled out, then we tried to reach Tickle My Tamale, but we, they didn't return our call, maybe they were busy or something. So we'll have two, but the one is expanding their menu, you know, to make their home, which is, two is perfectly fine.
Yeah.
Right, I think so.
They'll make more money that way, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so what we said, seven fifty?
Seven fifty for Kites and Kicks, okay.
Also, in between there somewhere, there's the Prairie Path, that's in April, isn't it? Which I missed that one. I feel like we provided water and chips.
Water and chips and snacks, I think that was it, right?
Yeah.
So, yeah, should we say a hundred, just to be on the?
I'm very comfortable saying a hundred.
A hundred sounds good, anymore.
Okay.
What about?
Prairie Path Cleanup in April.
What is that?
Oh, no, let's pause on the path.
Is Prairie Path Cleanup on here? No, that's an old, I don't know why that was not updated for this past year, it may even be two years or more.
Yeah, this is, this is exactly what's in our budget book.
So funny.
That.
Yeah. It was submitted, I don't know. I had it, but I don't know where I got it, because it was from a lot, but yes. I do, I remember doing it, and I remember you submitting it, so.
I know you got this from Charles, correct?
No.
That's a lot.
I thought that was from, I thought that was from when Eliza submitted it.
Yeah. It has projections for 2024. We might just do that.
Wait, does it look like, is it this?
No. No.
Oh, because that's what Cheryl sent, right? I, I condensed it to fit all on one page.
No, this is not. Was I, did I miss a page? This is what I got from.
Do you wanna know the number?
Yeah, just so I know what page it's on.
It's ten. Dot five eleven.
Because I didn't put anything in for Fall Festival.
Dot zero zero, six six seven.
Six six seven? Okay, thanks. Because I think when we had to submit it, I don't think.
I'm just gonna ask you, because I can't even see what the.
Well, anyway, we got this from somebody in City Hall or Rose Hall. I believe it was Cheryl last week.
I think she emailed a budget, maybe, with the, did she email the budget with the, the due date or something?
Yes, and then at the top of the sheet, it says, as of eight thirty-one thirty-three.
Yeah, and then there's, is there an eight twenty, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-two cents in that first column?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, that's, so this came right from the accounting software, which is, I think all of these numbers are the same as what's on this. Carla, you gave me this, right?
Yeah.
So this is like, I guess you can download, this is, looks like a PDF, maybe? And when I did it today, before I came, I put it in Excel, just because it's easier to make it bigger and stuff. But this matches this.
Okay.
What you have, and what Cheryl emailed.
So one of the things that would be cool is being able to line up what each of these are with, I mean, I guess, or just that, like.
Well, I had made the.
Not that the breakdown isn't cool, but like, I don't know what seventeen dollars and fifty-two cents went towards to be able to know, you know what I'm saying?
Like, it says, like, there's a column from, like, memo, right? The journal, and it just says AP, it seems like that would be the column that you'd have your notes.
Yeah, they don't, that's not how the, I'm sorry, they don't.
But these are actuals, right?
This is actuals, yeah. So they have the, they have the amount, and they have the person or business that received the amount. But there's not detail of what that entailed.
And that's what I had.
Yeah, this is.
When we were doing it, the old one.
Yeah, this is like after we talked to you, and you started doing more of this stuff. Because this is, this is April, and this I made in March. Kind of detailing everything, and I, that's a doc I shared with everyone. But then you kinda started to do more of the expenses stuff, so then I just stopped. So towards the bottom of this sheet, it has fifty-four ninety-five for BMO Harris Mastercard. That was, I submitted that expenditure, and that was the fifty-dollar Visa gift card for.
Thank you.
Was it landscaping? What was, the fifty?
The oldest tree.
Oh, oldest tree, oldest tree, so that's what the fifty-four ninety-five was. And then, I believe, the four thirteen, if I'm not mistaken, was paid to.
Food truck.
The food truck.
Food truck.
Yeah.
For Kites and Kicks.
Yeah. And then forty-seven thirty-three.
Could that have been for the ice cream?
I was just gonna say, is that, did we spend around fifty dollars?
It was forty-seven something, yeah.
Yeah, so that would have been the ice cream for Kites and Kicks. Oh, yeah, look, it was on June twenty-seventh, they went out and did it, yeah. So those, BMO Mastercard, two of them are mine, one is Cheryl's, when she paid the food truck. And then these other ones that are going directly to one of you.
This is one with.
It's me, but that's all from, um, the Find Lucky.
The top was all from Find Lucky.
Oh, I have that all figured out.
The two hundred and eight dollars was for the plants.
Okay, so are we on to?
So I can tell you all the stuff up until the BMO, because that's, that's how I was keeping track, but I have the copies of all the stuff submitted.
All right, so June second, Mary, you submitted two, two oh eight seventy-eight and two thirty-four ninety-nine.
The two oh eight was for flowers, and the two thirty-five was for the kites.
Okay. So landscaping, forty-seven.
Do we wanna get back, do I finish this, or do we wanna go back to the budget?
I think it's.
Let's list, because we're almost done. Okay, so the sixty-five was for a banner.
Wait.
Sixty-six fifty.
Sixty-six fifty, yeah, it's for the banner for Kites and Kicks.
Banner.
The seventy-seven ninety-four was for stencils and markers for Kites and Kicks, for Leslie. Seventy-five dollars, that was for the Fourth of July parade. It was twenty-five dollars for assorted stuff from Dollar General, the decoration, and fifty dollars to be in the parade.
Okay. That's.
Kind of remembering all of this.
Amazing.
I know.
And the eighteen fifty, Carla was.
I remember handing you the receipt.
What was that for, eighteen, oh, Summerfest, Summerfest tent decorations, Summerfest decorations for our tent.
Oh, you've got great memory.
Are we generally aware of accounts where there's no memo to tell you what an item was?
Right now, they are. We're in the process of transitioning to something different.
I got you. I was just curious. It'd be hard to manage, I would think.
It's not hard for them to manage, it's hard in our departments to make sure, we have to make sure we track it. So we have a system now where every time we pay a bill, we have a.
You have to have a separate way to track it?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I just like, I'm like, does everybody have a memory on their team that just remembers all this?
Yes.
Well, and then my other question has been.
I'm so impressed.
Where are the deposits? My other question has been, where are the deposits?
So, do you, do you know how to find revenue?
In here? Yes, but in the like, in the monthly checks, no.
Oh.
Yeah. We're still figuring out how we're gonna, how we're gonna do that, that was my question.
Yeah, they're, you know, like, you know, they're a different number, of course, and they're, and the number is linked to the different accounts.
Yeah, and there are a lot of them.
Yeah. I mean, for the revenue, too. Yeah.
Yeah.
Will you?
Because we get the check runs, but we don't, I don't see like the revenue yet.
You get the check runs more than likely, because you have to approve the expenditures. They think you're not gonna say no to money going in, so, but that, I could see.
Yeah, I used to, you know, see what's going on.
I think Chuck's gonna be a little bit more active with giving reports.
Yeah, well, and I think with the new system, you think, oh, that's gonna help.
Yeah, for sure.
Dollar amount. Are you, what are we on, or just?
What item are we on?
Yeah.
If we wanna do this planter business, so, I think we should, probably should look at where those planters are on the corner of St. Charles and Ardmore, because I think we have to do something with the Tueta Lighthouse, or find another place for them.
So is that this one that's on here, Prairie Path Planters, Community Beautification? So is that this one that's on here, Prairie Path Planters Community Beautification Awards?
Right.
I would love if we could find a, like, adopt a planter, or, like, we had said something about, like, Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, to do something to beautify it, instead of it coming out of the Fund Commission's budget. Like, are there any other commission groups that do that?
No.
I didn't think so.
At one point.
I feel like doing six, it's kind of like null and void if there's like forty out there that are empty.
I remember at one point, the Junior Women's Club did landscaping at Jefferson Pool, and they planted actually quite a few perennials, if I'm not mistaken, that are still.
So you don't have to.
Yeah, they're, so, you know, and then, every once in a while, someone's over there weeding or something, but then our Parks guys, you know, take care of it too. But I don't believe any other commission is doing landscaping, to my knowledge.
And Ardmore, um, trying to think for a second, sorry.
Between the train tracks.
Of the train tracks, right, all those corners, who did that?
The village.
So, this is what I understand, I think we received, we received a grant, and we put all of that in there, and then, we're, we were in Park Sherrock saying, who's gonna maintain this, right?
I was gonna say, aren't those all perennials too, but I mean, I'm sure there's weeding to be done or something, but it looks very pretty. I, I wish that was like on St. Charles.
I think that's what, what they're attempting to do with the Tiff District.
So we, I think, have a contractual landscaping company that does it some stuff in the village, and I think those are included, because there's no water source there, right?
And that's the thing, like, Mary or Mary and Leslie seem to go and water them all the time, like, I.
Well, we didn't this year.
We're kind of. Which is why we shouldn't waste the money on it if we, you know what I mean, sorry. I think we should find a, create a program that doesn't cost us money and house to beautify, sorry, guys.
I'd hate to have them empty.
Yeah, because they're, they're ours.
Given that word, the garden village.
What do you mean when you say that, like, do we buy?
At one point, right?
Right.
Yeah, we did, they're ours.
Oh, literally, yes.
You bought the, the big pots?
Yes. So I think it is our.
I thought it was village pots.
No, I think it is our responsibility to maintain.
Well, yeah, right, you know what?
So, I think we should budget some money. Now, if we happen to get someone to help us, cool, but I think we have.
There's four of those big cement ones on the, right here, so, yeah, right here, right here. And, yeah, the muffler place doesn't want one by his, by his thing. I don't know when that was, I don't know if we could revisit that with that person to see if we could get it moved back there.
You said that he has a whip muffler place.
Right here.
Right across the street.
Oh.
Across the Walgreens.
Because it's Walgreens, there's one by Walgreens too, right?
There's Walgreens.
Yeah, and that one's hard.
And they, they did water theirs.
Oh, nice.
We asked them, and the gas station. The gas station did water theirs.
I am not gonna lie, I am up for fake stuff that's gonna stay there.
No.
And then the barber shop waters his, so that's three, two, three, yeah.
And then we have the one that's in front of Bird Sanctuary, we probably could get them, if we, you know, get them.
I would think so.
We get them at a lot of our events, we have a pretty, fairly good relationship with them, so we could certainly ask them. Yes. Or we could move that one, it's just kind of random. Right, it was up there when there was a, a business that was maintaining that one, so we can always move that one.
So maybe we could move the couple that the people aren't willing to help us maintain, maybe? And then, just plant some pretty flowers and have them water them.
They're, they're not cement, they're metal.
Yeah, they're cool.
Oh, yeah, the ones that are over on Park Boulevard, I'm sorry, on Central Boulevard and Park.
I think I'm thinking of the wrong ones.
Yeah, no, they're cool, they're really cool. There's one right in front of the barber shop, and there's one right in front of the bird sanctuary, they're like across the.
Okay.
And those ones are nice and easy, because you can park and plant, and these are a little bit tougher to get to.
Right.
But, so it was what, two hundred and?
I think we did two hundred.
Two hundred?
We went two hundred eighty.
Well, it says, oh, it includes awards too, so. So it's five hundred and on the line.
For flower pots and landscaping awards.
Yeah, it says Prairie Path, Perry, bleh, Prairie Path Planters Community Beautification Awards, five hundred dollars.
You know, what's interesting is, I'm looking at the budget, the PDF of that, big PDF, but the screenshot you gave me has more information than what I just pulled down. Where is your source coming from?
I believe I got this from Cheryl on Friday in an email.
So that's been updated since that, it looks, okay, okay.
Yeah, because this would have been printed when adopted December nineteenth, at the beginning of the year.
Okay.
If it wasn't printed right after.
Okay, so it does, it's, it's living, it, they update it throughout the year electronic, okay. Cool, just curious.
So what should we stick with for those?
Well, it was two oh eight seventy-eight, that was just.
Flowers, right?
Yeah.
That was just flowers, then we have three landscape awards at fifty dollars a pop.
Do we want to stick with those?
Absolutely, why wouldn't we?
Just throwing it out there.
Okay, I don't think we have to do.
No, but I do.
Yeah.
I'm just.
Well, it's, I mean, we're adding things, and we've got some bigger things, so I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there as.
That's like the tradition, that's, that's what this commission was kind of founded on.
Yeah, we're.
And once.
I know we're fearing.
I feel very strongly that we are the Garden Village.
Yeah.
So flowers should be part of our mission.
Yes, for sure.
Figure out how.
But do we need fifty dollars for the awards?
I don't think we need fifty dollars, as long as we can get twenty-five gift cards. For the spring ones, it's just probably, you know, if you need.
Well, for like the, these other events, we had businesses donating gift cards, right?
Right, well, yeah, that's.
Thanks to Mary.
That's what we need to go out and.
So we just got some Mary on.
But yeah, just to actually, if you still want me to keep making the awards, I mean, you know, maybe it's ten bucks at Dollar Tree or something, for whatever's cool, and, you know, stickers and stuff, so. You know, that's ten bucks a pop, when you get to the, to the Halloween, it'll be different now with the Halloween and the Christmas awards, because you're gonna make awards twice. You're gonna have to make an award to give the people, when you tell them they're nominated, and then you're gonna, when they win, and they come to the board meeting, you have to give, you want to give them a nicer award. So that's, that's an added expense, so you only twenty, twenty separate awards for it to be given. And it's not that expensive.
But it's like paper crafts, it's pretty nominal, right?
It, you know, it'll, it depends upon what you want to do. Last year, we gave ornaments to the Christmas people, it depends upon what you can, you know, an ornament, they're just something that hangs.
Yeah, a little door hanger that's a ghost or a tree would be cute.
That's the easiest way to go.
I can make those, that's pretty.
Just with the information, you have to cut it out or something, but, um, whatever, because it doesn't have to be, I don't think.
So is that part of beautification awards, or is that like a holiday?
I got it as a separate thing.
No, I think it's separate, oh, I think we're talking about just the overall, what we're giving for.
Yeah, for whatever, for the difference, I, I digress, I'm sorry.
No, no, I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss something.
I think that, to me, the planters and the, the summer, three summer awards are, are different things, but they.
Should we separate it out?
Together, that's.
Right, I'm, I'm breaking this out now, with all the different things that we have going on.
Okay.
So that's what I get.
So really, this should be just landscaping and planters, right?
Planters and planters, I like your idea of.
I have, yeah, I have the planters on their own, separate from landscape awards.
Okay, so that, so for just planters, should we say two fifty, because we just spent two hundred?
I think that's fair.
Two fifty?
Mm-hmm, do we want, you know, do we want to go a little bit higher, just because we have, we put one.
We did veggies.
Oh, you did veggies too?
Yeah, I mean, I think veggies, herbs, we're trying to think outside the box, and people can go snip some veggies, like.
Herbs are a really good idea.
I think so, they fill up nicely. Throw some mint in all of them, we're good.
Yep, parsley.
Yeah.
I don't want to lose any money that way. I don't either, you know.
So let's go through it once, and then we can always go back through.
Okay, so two fifty for planters?
Yep.
And then should we go to autumn awards then?
Landscaping.
Landscaping awards? Sorry, oh.
Yeah, I think that, I think it was more before, because you went and got those big yard signs, I don't know if you want to go back that way or not. We have that guy that could do that for, you know, you know that guy that'll do it.
You mean, in place of you making your awards, would you prefer that?
No, I, no, it doesn't bother me at all to make, make the awards I like to make, but I don't know, you want to go back to having that thing in the yard, so that everybody can see that this, this one, an award? I don't know, what's the consensus?
What, what is, is that something we're renting, or we borrowed, or what was the thing that landed in the person's yard, like, is that a reusable thing?
Yeah, of course.
No, they get it.
Huh?
It's like, they get to keep it.
Like a voting sign, only it's round and says, this is, you know, nineteen ninety.
I wonder if it'd be cool to have something, like, sturdy that kind of is like a trophy, right? And you think about like a sports team that wins, like, you know, hey, I've got it now, it'd be a fun little competitive thing.
You mean, to reuse.
To reuse.
I agree with you on that.
So like, I got it this year.
Because honestly, what are they gonna do with it after?
But then we're gonna go back and take it out of their yard, so.
Oh, that's a good point, I would probably do.
I'd rather go take something out of someone's yard than go water plants.
If you put a note.
On St. Charles Road.
If you put a note, well, we got our jobs designated right here, if you put a date on it, they can put it out every year if they want.
You could air tag it.
I'm actually wondering if we couldn't do like one of those small metal signs, that would say Landscape Award twenty twenty-four, you know.
I mean, if we can buy a metal sign, we can make it with vinyl. Because I can do that at home, for very cheap, if we can find a sign that's outdoor, huh?
Like do a galvanized metal.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
Something that just kind of looks prestigious, not just like a yard sign, right?
The printed ones are expensive, when you go, when you have one.
That basically becomes a, a lawn or a garden fixture, as opposed to the big signs that we had.
I think I'm gonna vote that we start doing the budget in June. So we have enough time to research all these items that we're talking about, because I have no idea how much.
Well, let's just put it this way, that we need, we're gonna spend a little bit of money to do an award type thing for something like that, I mean, we, it's a budget, right? It's not, we're not, we're not coins.
So should we stick it fifty dollars per?
Stick a fifty dollars per, then we'll see what.
And then we can always see if we can shave it down?
And that's four quarters, so we're talking fifty, you're two hundred bucks a year.
I agree. If you wanted to do twenty-five dollars of a gift and twenty-five dollars of a sign, yeah.
So how many do we do?
Well, hopefully, we could figure that out.
Tell me how many we do.
Three, one, two, three, are you, I'll tell you what, the holiday ones too.
Well, let's, let's say three, and then the holiday.
I was talking about just landscaping.
Separate. Okay, so three.
So a hundred and fifty dollars.
A hundred and fifty dollars for landscaping awards for, tell me the months?
True July and August.
Okay.
Okay, um, Fourth of July parade, well, it's fifty dollars to get in, okay? And I wouldn't want to do as far as decorations, you want to budget some money for that.
Do we need to do a float again, or can we just walk?
I say we just walk.
So then do.
And I'm not going anywhere near any places where I can sprain my knee.
Good idea.
Do you spray your ankle at the parade?
I know, I sprained my knee before the parade, and I couldn't, yeah.
Um, do we need a banner?
Mister Gutshock.
It'd be kind of cool if we had a magnetic.
Advertise that with.
Right, it'd be kind of cool if we had a magnetic one on the vehicle.
What vehicle do we need if we're walking?
You're walking.
Aren't you gonna have like waters, or if someone needs to cool down?
No, you're just gonna have to tough it out, until you get it all the way around.
Maybe like.
I mean, we could bring my car. What about like hand signs and whatever, little fans?
So, I'll just.
The Fun Commission?
When the Discover Dance Program really had a lot of kids in it, they marched in the Fourth of July, um, parade, and we got a banner made. And then it had growlts on the top, we put rings on it, and put a pole, and the kids and everybody walked with it.
Well, we have a banner.
So.
I was just gonna say.
If you're just walking, you know, you can have a couple of you go with, with a banner if you want.
Shake a. Have many of us, so that we're not handing out anything, or we could hand out.
Well, we did hand out the odd, the Jubilee, uh.
Not if we're holding a banner.
No, I'm saying, instead of a banner, you could have little fans that say Fun Commission.
Yeah, maybe we could have our own.
And a satchel with?
Junk.
Yeah.
Junk satchel.
I don't know.
I don't know, boots and satchels.
Would you rather do a?
What is our, do we decide the theme already?
I don't think it's up to us to decide, because BMW was the one that came up with the theme.
I was thinking dog costumes around, everybody, everybody.
They're expensive.
I'm definitely out.
I don't think that would fly in the budget.
Yeah, I think.
I mean, it's still fifty bucks if you walk in it or not, right?
Correct.
But it's a lot cheaper to not, uh, do a float.
Honestly.
It was twenty-five bucks.
If you're, if you're thinking, from a kid's perspective, like, would you rather see more money going in the float, would you rather have more candy? We have the Fun Commission, I'm just saying, we top everybody with like the best candies.
I think we should hand out something that's maybe not candy, that's unique and fun and cheap. And when I say cheap, I mean not like it's a piece of garbage, I mean like inexpensive. I think we can find stuff. I mean, so, we spent seventy-five last year total.
Do you want to stick with seventy-five, and then we can figure it out?
I think we go up to a hundred and fifty.
I think so too, okay.
Yeah, because I don't think in this budget, I don't know how we got the candy, we got the candy, because I don't think we ever paid anything back for that candy.
Probably not. Probably Leslie does pay for it.
Yeah, so I don't know how much that costs.
Yep.
And my husband is paying attention.
Garage.
You are averaging like ten purchases a month.
Like, Amazon, what have you bought?
What do you mean? I need all that candy for me.
Hundred dollars for Fourth of July? So would you, a hundred dollars for Fourth of July?
Yeah, and I mean, we're also assuming that the entry is gonna stay fifty bucks.
Well, that's true.
And again, this is our first turn through.
Yeah, okay.
To get total.
Got it.
Okay, Wesley said a hundred and fifty, so.
We said a hundred and fifty?
Yeah.
Okay.
So how much did you spend that candy during that? Seventy-five, a hundred?
So I heard you talk about fans, I just want to give you a dollar since fucking budgets, we do fans that we, um, have all of our summer, like, events on both sides, and we hand those out at the concerts.
Oh.
Um, we, we bought seven hundred and fifty fans at a dollar fifty each, so it's very inexpensive, but it, there must be, I'm assuming.
Well, that's bulk, though.
Right, but you, I thought you said you were gonna maybe pass out fans at the Fourth of July parade, so I was just letting you know what they cost.
Okay, that's cool.
Do you just want the fan for yourself?
I thought that's what you meant.
No, I was saying, like, we could hold fans with the Fun Commission.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh.
I thought you wanted to pass out fans.
I just to, instead of a banner.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like a paper thing on like.
Yeah, a stick, yeah, yeah, we could, that's a thought.
We still have a lot of stuff to go through.
Yes.
From the promo show.
Yes.
I have a whole bag of stuff that we can go through.
There's tons of them, yeah, hundred percent.
Okay.
Cool, okay.
We don't have that Summerfest tent, are we invited back to the Summerfest tent, do you have that?
I'm invited.
Got this here.
Okay. Okay, so we got Fourth of July parade.
Yep, we put that in there.
That's it.
Um, next up would be Summerfest.
Summer Festival, let's remember.
Summer Festi Festivus.
Super wonderful.
I call it Summer Festivus, just between you and me.
Just a rest of us.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Okay. What'd we have on there?
Um, well, this is for the decoration. Yeah, it was like eighteen dollars.
Decorations, do we get any?
Well, we did, yeah, we did, but I.
We did our stickers.
Little balls, yeah. The beach balls, I made for the beach balls.
Is that what, you spent just eighteen fifty for the whole?
Well, she, that was, well, yeah, that was, that was for the decorations and then I bought, I bought beach balls and passed them out to kids.
Why don't we put a hundred? We can start there.
Okay, alright.
So you, you want, you want a fee, you know, to do it?
Right, yeah. Next up was concerts in the park. And that was just having our table and, um, you know, getting the word out, so I would put that more even under advertising, whether it's our flyers or whatever we're doing.
So do you want as concerts in the park or should we have just advertising as a separate line?
I feel like we should have concerts in the parks.
Okay.
Cause that's when you're sending them out.
Right, exactly, but and, and then there was always candy or.
Yeah, if you brought candy.
And stickers, yeah.
Yeah, stickers, right, let's definitely get stickers.
I do have down here at the bottom, I knew, stickers, we need more cards.
Yeah. Stickers, cards, magnets, yeah, but that probably.
So there's eight concerts.
Okay.
Nine. Nine concerts, okay. There's four in June and five in August.
Okay.
I already checked, cause this year there were ten.
I don't think so, unless you wanna, you know, so far away.
So, fifty?
I would, I would say a hundred at least.
For nine?
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, and then we have Halloween decoration awards.
And we do two people, so that's, we do two people, scariest and not scariest.
Correct.
Fifty dollars each?
Fifty dollars each, and then what does it cost you, are you gonna make awards again? If you want me to make one, just let me know.
Okay.
It doesn't, it's not a lot of money to make an award, it's just not, um, it's just not as, um, oofy, if somebody puts something in their yard.
Yeah. But they were cool last year, you did a beautiful job on them.
So you wanna say one, two hundred?
Yeah, I think that's good.
Okay.
And then I would do the same thing for the holiday, holiday decoration awards.
Two hundred.
Last year we had traditional and colorful. And we did for the past three Christmases, we've had, we've had two awards for one of them. Remember, we had the people across the street and last, we had the two with the, so I don't know if that's gonna happen again though.
Do you wanna say two fifty?
Let's say two fifty.
And that is just for the holiday one or both holiday and Halloween?
That's, no.
That's just for the holiday.
Halloween is two hundred and the holiday is two fifty.
And then for joyful traditions, two, are we gonna buy a Christmas tree again?
Oh, yeah. That was seventy-five.
Plus decorations?
Decorations.
Yeah, listen.
And then we did the, the cookies and the hot chocolate.
Cookies.
I would say that's fine.
Coffee we did.
Tree, ducks, refreshments.
That's including our tree and the, and the actual ho- joyful traditions.
Correct.
Okay.
What's the total of that?
Five hundred.
Alright, so where are we?
Well, we haven't, didn't do our Jubilee.
The only thing that's left is Autumn Jubilee.
Well, in our advertising, so stickers and mag- what do you have for stickers and magnets maybe?
I, I just have stickers and I have, um, I have signs, I don't know why I wrote down signs, but.
Well.
So, so plus on the path, that's on the thing?
No.
No.
Okay. We've kind of, um, combined that now into the Autumn Jubilee, I think that went very well.
I think it was great.
People thought it was like a petting zoo.
Depending on who you talk to, like my grandson, the only reason that people came to the Autumn Jubilee was because of the adoption.
Oh my gosh.
How old is he? Twelve.
Oh, well.
I bet that's a draw though. That's the only reason why people came out, I'm pretty sure, so I'm like, yeah, I know that's why you came out. Did he adopt an animal? No, we don't need anymore.
Hey, why don't you pet them?
Right, that's the most part of it, you get to pet them.
I got three thousand and two fifty, we're, we're.
I'm at thirty-two fifty before.
Before the Jubilee.
Oh, don't you?
And before.
Stickers and magnets.
Right.
With, which we're calling advertising as well, right?
Correct.
Wait, I have some difference.
Oh, man.
I really think that should, we should get ball caps or something that are, that's easy for people to throw on, that say fun commission. So, I mean, we have shirts, that's fine, but I mean, I didn't see, you know, we weren't all uniformed.
Thirty-two fifty? Thirty-two fifty, okay, I have thirty-two fifty.
Yeah.
Okay. So I don't know what you guys think about that.
Well, can we add stickers and magnets though, cause we don't have that in there.
Oh, sticker, I have advertising stickers, magnets, and I'm gonna say ball caps, apparel.
Some clothing stuff, yeah. Apparel.
Yeah.
Yeah. Wardrobe.
I don't think we can say apparel, I think we should say promotional?
Okay, why don't you think you can say apparel?
So I don't think we're like out for anything else. It's more like, it's more like giveaways and stuff.
No, I'm talking about for us.
Okay.
I do think it's advertising.
It's advertising.
Right.
Advertising and promotion maybe, right?
Sure.
What do you wanna put for that?
Opinion on that because I don't.
This includes banners and stuff, potentially too, right?
No, each event, I think each event is included, has their own.
You'll include that in the?
Have their banner.
Yeah.
Flyers and stuff like that.
Yeah.
This is for our, our stickers.
For like giveaways and.
Okay.
Just fun stuff there, yeah.
If we went back to, um, maybe we should do Autumn Jubilee first and then see where we're at for advertising.
So I'm gonna call it, we landed at spending three. Just rounding it, we're only four dollars and fifty cents.
If I'm, if, if I'm recalling an earlier conversation when we first started talking about budgeting, there, there wasn't a huge pressure to necessarily stay or follow on with an existing year budget, like, I didn't get the impression that we were under big constraints necessarily, is that? Am I understanding that? I guess before we start trying to whittle down, did we have a lot of pressure in that space or like to, to stay flat for the year or like, cause I think the Jubilee.
Well, you didn't wanna go over budget, that was.
But what we're doing a new budget though is what I'm saying is like, is there pressures from looking forward to twenty twenty-four where it's like, yeah, you guys really gotta stay flat, or if we double our budget, but we go, yeah, but along with that.
Right, right, that's what we wanna do.
Okay, so I just, I wanted to make sure we're not trying to like already squish things.
Oh, no, not squish that. But we don't wanna be like.
Increase our budget to include the Autumn Jubilee event in our actual budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And keep what our original budget was.
Okay, we're not trying to, okay, to cut stuff, yes.
And probably do pad that by about ten percent is what I'm thinking.
So advertising and promotion as it stands right now should be two fifty, then we're at our original budget.
Alright, which?
Thirty.
Those stickers are six, seven hundred bucks, aren't they?
Should we bump it to five hundred?
I think we should go to a thousand on advertising.
Yeah. Thousand? Yeah. I mean, cause that's, yeah.
It's clear that the success of our events is, you know, is, is tied into the effort that's put behind this, right? I mean, we talked about that with the Jubilee, so.
And then thirty-five hundred for Jubilee?
So you had seven thousand, seven fifty. Now, is, did we spend thirty-five hundred on this year's Jubilee?
We spent three thousand.
Three thousand.
Three thousand, okay. I guess I was just thinking in terms, yeah, um, is, are we looking to expand that, grow, grow the Jubilee given the success of it this year? I know, do we, do we need more than that?
Is that enough?
Yeah.
What would you like to see added for next year?
I'd like one more kids thing.
Let's say at least.
Whether it be the bouncy thing, a bouncy house, a petting zoo.
Or it's a bouncy house or something. Petting zoo, some, I agree.
Cause like we had the one balloon dude and, and then we needed something over here.
And I gotta say, I almost, on my way there, I was like, you know, we're kind of paying a lot of money for this balloon guy. They're all expensive. I looked up several, they're all really about the same price, I told my husband we're in the wrong business, but, um, okay, so maybe we won't use them anymore.
The whole, the whole area.
And I was shocked at the lines and I was shocked at our little craft table, how busy.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was.
That's what I, I heard about the craft table.
It was constant.
It blew me away. The only one thing I would like to change with the craft tables was, um,
Is Brenna?
Get a, that too, and, cause I didn't expect it to be so busy, but have a sign and honestly, it's something, could be handwritten, I just don't wanna forget this. Decent sized sign at the tables saying, telling people to go get their pumpkins at the Boy Scouts.
Yeah.
Well, they could, yeah.
Yeah. Again, it could be a handwritten thing, like just some, cause we had this pumpkin that was like little, little writing on it, you know, it just wasn't, we didn't advertise them to go get the pumpkins enough, I think. So I just wanna remember.
Well, that could be part of our.
Even if it's a big piece of paper, uh, on it, there's something.
Or buy, buy a pumpkin and paint it cute that says, go buy your pumpkins.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, I bought a pumpkin and we wrote on it, but it was with a marker and so it wasn't really seen so well.
Yeah. Just we have to think of that ahead of time.
Adipa said that some school, someplace, I'd have to check with her, has all these games that they had created or gotten somehow for some, some festival that the school had, which they don't have anymore and they're just stored in this room. So if we find out where that is, uh, you know, they'll, they would can lend them to us. Um, so I, I could see them over on the grassy side, you know, mowing or whatever they have.
Yeah. Or even like a ring toss or something.
Yeah, ring toss.
Yeah, we could do some, yeah, that's great.
So that would be low cost, if no cost.
Perfect.
Yeah, just, but then we need volunteers, we'd need to really push volunteers to.
And, and honestly, in that case, I think that's when we reach out to high school. I, I imagine they still do it, when Austin was there, I could swear it was with health class, he had to have six hours of volunteer hours. I could swear, I would be surprised if they stopped doing that and ask, um.
Okay.
Okay, well, do you wanna bump it to four or do you wanna?
So it was three thousand this last year, we're talking, we want more kids stuff, right? More activities, and I would, I would second that, 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 give people more reasons to stick around, right? So not do the, hey, let's walk down this aisle, let's walk down this aisle, okay, I think we're good, so the more reasons, I think you're gonna get more people buying more food, you know, interacting more, so I think figuring that out. The other thing I was gonna ask is, you know, we desperately needed seating for the eating area, so we might have to rent that.
So, my thing was to get the party trailer and request it on like January second.
But let's assume we can't, what would that cost to, to pay for that?
I have no idea.
Well, we can, we can request more, more picnic tables.
What do they do when, with National Night Out, when they, when we had National Night Out, there were more picnic tables?
Yeah.
Where did they get those picnic tables?
We did ask for them for kites and kicks.
If there were picnic tables, that more than likely came from our parks that were moved there, but we have tried to stop doing that because it's a huge undertaking, so we rent the tables.
We don't love carrying them either, to be honest, they're very heavy.
They're really heavy.
So there's another expense.
Yeah, we don't use the party trailer for stuff because that, we don't wanna have wear and tear on that, that's for.
Can we u- can we rent it though?
I don't, you know what, I don't know the answer to that, I can ask certainly what they're.
When I called for this year, it was booked for that date already, but I was late to the party, I think they open up, like, does it, the calendar?
I think in January, yeah.
Like January first or something.
Yeah, we tried for kites and kicks too and it was, maybe that was the reason why, because they didn't wanna, because.
I would hope.
But I feel like.
No, I don't think they would've said it was taken, I mean, every weekend I think was used.
From a budget perspective, we should budget for worst case scenario, which is we gotta rent this stuff, right?
I have seen it out and about somewhere, definitely.
If we don't.
I've never seen it anywhere.
You're kidding?
Oh, I do, I think.
Okay, so I had no concept of what it costs to rent.
Oh my gosh, it's so expensive.
Well, come on.
Well, that's the thing, it's a fortune, I kinda feel like for.
I didn't realize that.
Be easier.
Okay.
Let's bump it up to five thousand, all we can do is ask.
Okay.
Add five thousand or bump it to five thousand?
Bump it to five thousand.
We're getting carnival rides nowadays. We're gonna own candles, so, just kidding, I would never.
We have those. You build parks.
So what is our?
That's right.
Hold on.
Ninety-two fifty. Ninety-two fifty.
Okay.
Just FYI, chairs are two dollars apiece, eight foot banquet tables are thirteen dollars apiece.
So thirteen dollars a table?
Seven hundred and thirty bucks.
Two dollars per chair.
Just.
Okay, thanks.
Alright, so we're changing Autumn Jubilee to five thousand?
Correct.
Okay.
And so our grand total would be what we'd be asking for is nine thousand two hundred and fifty.
Ninety-two fifty.
Now, we do have to, uh, go over the event with Kevin Patrick, didn't he, he say that?
That's the presentation next Monday.
Yeah, so if anybody can come with.
When?
That would be awesome.
Yeah, isn't it nice to have people there to support you? Yeah, isn't it nice to have people there to support you? And it feels good.
To do.
Presentation. Uh, what time is it out?
The meeting starts at seven.
Seven, um, on the ninth.
Yeah, so just to give a quick presentation on how the Autumn Jubilee went and like kinda fill them in on details. But did he call it a presentation report, I think is what he requested. I'm good?
I think so.
Did I forget anything?
I don't think so. Alright.
Or, one, just one quick thing, so Brew Fest next year will be on October fifth.
Okay.
So it would be great if there was just a little bit more room between, um.
I have to really think about.
The craft beer festival and the Autumn Jubilee, especially if yours continues to grow.
The weekend before is homecoming, so like a lot of my mom friends were like, I wouldn't come. They'll come and get food and do some shopping, even though they don't have littles, but they're on a homecoming day, they're taking their. Took, they're doing runs to get flowers, they're taking their kids, they get their hair done, last minute.
Is that the?
Accessory shopping, so.
So is that where homecoming will be?
Is that October fifth though?
Uh, it was the twenty-third this year was.
Oh, is that why you switched off for the twenty?
I had a, a wedding.
Oh, okay.
And I got to save the date and it was something I, I had to show up for, but anyway.
So when is?
It ended up being at homecoming.
I think that's the first, it's, it's the first Saturday in October.
And what were we looking at?
Saturday before, probably.
You were looking at the twenty eighth.
September twenty eighth.
But you're talking Gina about trying to get a little more space in between.
Just.
I just say, having nice weather, you, you think about what, how that event would've been different with, with, you know, if it was fifty outside or something, you know?
Yeah.
Um, I, I lean earlier into September, that's just, I don't know. If we had to, so the, like the fourteen.
When is the first day of autumn, is this not on my calendar?
Is it the twenty-first? Or the twentieth of September?
Cause you go further into October and I just think there's no telling what.
On the don't, I prefer to keep it in September for sure. But I just don't wanna be on homecoming weekend, even though I know that.
Which weekend is that?
We gotta find out.
Well, this year was the twenty-third, it was the Saturday before.
Okay, so the Saturday, the twenty-third, so if we went to the fourteenth, is, are we calling that too early?
Um, of October, or are you?
No, no, September.
I mean, autumn isn't even till twenty-first.
We could have it on the twenty-first.
But then that's probably.
But that's, yeah, I guess, that's a feedback.
And what, what comes into play too is like if your oldest is a homecoming person, but you still have younger ones at home that would go to this event.
Right.
You know what I mean?
Well, and also, if you want high school volunteers.
You don't have to decide this now, I just wanted to give you the date, so you knew about it, cause.
Think about putting it on Sunday, like we do Kites and.
Honestly, I was freaking exhausted and I was glad that I didn't have work the next day. And I already took off the Thursday before to do stuff for this, I don't wanna take a week off of work just for this event, sorry.
You wanna do as much.
I don't get paid when I take off, so. No, like when I take off from my job, I don't get paid, I don't have PTO at my job.
Probably wouldn't have to do as much work next year, just because.
A lot of it's done. But you'd rather, I don't know.
It's like, I don't know about that.
Alright, well, that's another meeting, this is all.
Budget.
Yes, this is a budget meeting, so if there's anything else. Um, any other commissioner comments on the budget at this point?
No.
No?
Um, when do we present it, or we just submit it?
Get this, yeah, I need to submit this.
Would you like me to put it on an Excel spreadsheet?
Thank you.
You're welcome, and I will get that to you.
It needs to be in by October tenth, I believe, I think it's the ninth, no, it's this, this Friday.
Okay.
That's why we called this meeting.
Got it, okay, by this Friday, but I will get it to before then.
Alright, Dave, anything?
Nope.
You're good?
I'm good.
Mary, anything else? Alright. Um, I'm happy with where we're at right now, I know that it's a big ask, but I think we've justified our expenses. And I think we've proven ourselves this year, uh, with all the new events that we've brought forth and. The advertising that we have done, um, the commission is definitely getting noticed. And appreciated by the people of the village, so hopefully we'll get the support.
Well, and I think the, the lawn signs made such a huge difference, like you can tell with the Autumn Jubilee with the lawn signs versus like Kites and Kicks, where we didn't have lawn signs.